The special meaning of the Belvo zoning board of adjustment for November 30th, two thousand and fifteen will come to order. Clerk hold the roll.
Caruso.
Yeah.
Gagano.
Here.
Mafucci.
Here.
Matamana.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Higgins.
Here.
Delgertia.
Here. Everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, has notice of this meeting been given in accordance with sunshine law?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, notice of this meeting was given to the public in the press and court of the local company.
Okay. I want to announce that Mr. Clifford Gibbons of the law firm of Dolan and Dolan will be the board attorney for tonight because Mr. Regal's indisposed for personal matters. Okay? First case to be called would be ZB, or actually the only case to be called, would be ZB two thousand and fifteen dash twenty-five Geron, sixty-one seventy-one Mill Street. I hope I said that right. Applicant is proposing to operate a new and used tire shop at this location. However, there is an existing business called Town Gate there already, so it's two uses. Okay. Mr. Di Biase.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the board. Counselor's name is Thomas Di Biase, representing the applicant. And we appreciate your coming out for a special meeting, especially at this time of year. We do not take that lightly, and I know our client appreciates that greatly. An overview may be in order. I have two witnesses this evening. Roger Caruso, who is actually the consultant to not only the landlord but the tenant. And Mr. Caruso will be overseeing the retail operation if this board approves it. And Mr. Baumann, who has testified in front of this board before as a planner, also has an engineering degree. Because the schematic is rather straightforward, Mr. Cazarelli, who performed the schematic, has a conflict this evening. We thought we would give him a pass as opposed to having him rush here and having him rush back. I'm familiar with this board, and I know that each one of you can read these plans in your sleep. And I told Mr. Cazarelli that we would be able to go forward without him. The board knows the dimensions. For the record, I'll have Mr. Baumann put them on.
Excellent, because as long as we could read them while we're awake.
Yes. As a matter of fact, we had to get the dimensions from him. Because if you look at his plan about this bit, and for the record, I'm talking about something that is...
Which page are we talking about? The one that shows the river or the one that doesn't?
No, the one that actually shows the configuration.
The floor plan?
Which, the floor plan, which has, simply pointing to that, we're talking about an area that we're seeking to occupy forty-one hundred square feet.
Counselor, do you confirm this is the schematic you're referring to?
I would, Counselor, and thank you. If you want to mark that as an exhibit, I would defer to you.
Glad you drew that, Mr. Chairman, if that's all right.
Yes.
I'm going to mark applicant's A1.
A1.
A2, I'm sorry.
A1 was the notices.
Didn't he look at the notices last night?
Yes.
Yes, I thought so.
He was kind enough to put on the record that the notices were acceptable.
I thought so. Eleven thirty fifteen, which is a schematic diagram identified as quote-unquote "besneen" plan for proposed tire business office.
Thank you, Counselor. And just to repeat, we're talking about an area that we're proposing to use about forty-one hundred square feet. It's about forty-four feet wide and ninety-three feet and some inches deep. And in our site visit, it's clear, and when you did your site visit, it's clear that this retail use is not visible from Mill Street. It is in the rear portion of the property. So here is the general concept that our client has, and we wish him well. When any entrepreneur gambles money, we wish the entrepreneur well, and we wish this small business person well, because there are hurdles that he's going to have to overcome. He is in a section on Mill Street that is not highly trafficked, not a lot of visibility. And we went over these issues with him, and we said, what is your plan? What is your vision? And you will hear testimony, this is just an opening statement for Mr. Caruso. How are you going to market the property if this project, if in fact the board is approving? And it's a new element. Our client is going to rely heavily on the Internet. He is going to try to make this a very simple, quick in-and-out operation. He wants people to log on. He wants to give them specific time periods. And he wants to get the customer in and out in fifteen minutes, which is a lot to do. And that's on the repair side. If there's something wrong with the tire, we would log on, we would get a time, we would come in, and our tire would be changed. Now, when you look at the big block you have, you see an open space. The forty-one hundred square feet is open. And that's because this is a different kind of tire shop. Our client is not talking about putting lifts in, but he's talking about using the same kind of air jacks that you and I would see NASCAR drivers using. And you see when the car pulls in, how quickly they're jacked it up, put it on, put it off. And that leads me to talk about the amount of employees. He wants to keep his overhead down, his payroll down. And he's talking about having two employees plus himself and Mr. Caruso overseeing the operation. So there would be a maximum of four people there at any one time with Mr. Caruso popping in and out as he testified. Another new concept, in order to keep his costs down, rather than having a lot of inventory, if you and I want to buy a tire, we would call in the tire on their program, computer program, and that tire would be ordered in a matter of hours and delivered in advance. So if I wanted a Goodyear tire with a specific specification, I would type it in. It would go to the computer system. A call would be made to the Goodyear dealership, and the tire would be delivered. And I commended him for that because he's keeping his up cost down. And yet, whatever tire you and I wanted, based upon this new concept, and you will hear this by testimony, it's just an opening statement, I want to keep saying that, will keep his costs down and will make it friendly to the consumer. Now, there's something else. When we walked around the neighborhood, we all looked and said, how about parking? And as a condition of employment, we are making our three employees park on the side streets. Apologize for that.
Let me just, I don't want you to interrupt. I think you just clarified something. So it's three employees, not two.
Well, I know what I'm doing, Counselor, on considering Mr. Caruso as an employee slash consultant. And in my opening statement, let me also say that we will be having one bookkeeper slash personnel. There's an upstairs office. When you did your site inspection and walked in, to your right up, there is an office up those stairs. And we will have an office person in there that will be taking the incoming calls and funneling them out. So that is another employee that would have to find off-street parking. And you know the neighborhood as well as I do. That's not an issue down there. So that all works out well. So we have a consultant, we have an owner, we have two employees, and then we have our office person. So now we have five people. Now, because we have a very large area, forty-one hundred square feet, Mr. Caruso testified that he believes that we can handle three customers at any time very comfortably to get them in and out. If we had to push the four, we could, but there may be a little weight. Now, this is almost like a drive-through window. We want to get the handbogger to the customer quickly and get them out. And we think that's going to give us a competitive edge. Plus, our client believes that keeping his overhead down, his cost down, his inventory down, he will be able to beat some of the bigger chains. And that's what his game plan is, and obviously, we are rooting for that. So with those general comments, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, may I call our first witness, Roger Caruso?
Yes, please. Please raise your right hand. This is all the testimony you're about to give in this matter. Will you give the truth-soved you got?
I do.
Please state your names, follow your last name.
Edward Roger Caruso, CAR, USA.
And for my, Counsel.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Caruso, just as a general background for the record, would you give the board the benefit of your experience and your education?
Well, I have a bachelor's degree in law school college. I was a police officer in New York, New Jersey. I was a police lieutenant in the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office. I was a principal investigator. I retired from the public defender's office. I'm a real estate broker, and I'm currently a private detective.
And how long have you owned the landlord of this property?
I know Mr. Geron for forty-five years.
And is it fair to say that as a result of that relationship, that you have earned his confidence in you?
Yes, he has a lot of confidence in both of him, in time and in time.
And as a result of that, he actually gave the power of attorney, which we submitted to the chairman and board members, showing that you had authority on this. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
And then as a result of the relationship with the landlord, you entered into a relationship with the proposed operator. Is that correct?
Yes, at the request of...
And now I'm going to lead you just a little bit because we don't have a jury here.
One point, just one point to clarify.
Yes, Counselor.
I appreciate your inclusion of the copy of the power of attorney. I presume you will verify to me that you or the representative has the original, and it will be available if ever requested.
I think we can do that. I can tell the board that I do not have the original.
I have.
But Mr. Caruso does. Would you please put that on the roll, sir?
I have it in the file.
And if Counsel or the chairman or board members want it, would you...
I could bring in here the...
That's fine. That should be sufficient. I've vacated.
Thank you for that courtesy. I appreciate that.
Go ahead.
Is it fair to say that you then gained the trust of the proposed operator?
Yes, sir.
That he saw the way you handled the property, the fact that you speak very good English and Spanish, and in effect, he said to you, I'd like you to be my consultant. I'd like you to help manage this operation if approved. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Now, what I did not go through in my opening statement would be the proposed hours of operation. And is it accurate to say that the operator is asking this board, even approves this application, to approve hours of operation from eight AM to six PM, Monday through Friday?
Seven.
Or would they like to push it to seven?
Seven.
Eight AM to seven PM. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then on Saturday, we would shorten it to eight to six. Is that correct?
Eight to six.
And Sunday, of course, closed.
Correct.
Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
And you also heard in the opening statement that there would be five consultant, employee, owners there at any one time. So let's go through that again because now you're on the roll. One, you're the consultant.
Yes, sir.
Two laborers.
Two men that work there.
One owner.
One owner.
And then there is the office worker and ladies.
It's going to be upstairs.
And you also heard that the concept of your client is that he would like to use the Internet as a marketing tool and also as a tool to keep his inventory down so that he could bring it on in a couple of hours. Is that correct, sir?
Absolutely.
And also to set appointments up.
That's right.
And that you came up with the idea of getting a competitive edge by saying, let's get people in and out sooner and more cheaply. Is that correct, sir?
That's right.
And that's actually your concept, what you sought to have.
Absolutely, yes.
Now, you heard in the opening comments that the proposed square footage approximately about forty-one hundred square feet. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the dimensions are forty-four across, ninety-three and a couple of inches deep.
Yes, sir.
You also heard me say that as a condition of employment, you're going to make sure that no employee parks on the property. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's been discussed, and Mr. Alvarado's gone along with that.
And you're going to enforce that?
I will.
Because if this board approves this application, you can bet that that's going to be a condition of that resolution. And if there's a violation of that resolution, you understand that the construction code official can issue a violation on that. Is that clear to you?
You'll make that clear to me. I like to test that.
You understand that?
So you would agree to a condition of approval, or we're so inclined, that no employees would park on the property, or I want to make sure that the board is clear as to what you're suggesting?
Yes. The owner, Mr. Alvarado, will be there on occasion, but the other employees will have to find off-sites parking on the street.
How about the secretary upstairs? Does she have parking?
She'll not. She won't have parking. Yes, she'll have to park on the street.
Is the owner of the property personally obligates the gate company in the front?
Well, yes, he's in the process of transferring over to another person because he's going to change his residence. He's going to retain his ownership and change his residence at the area. So there's going to be another person that's going to be running the company. Now, I don't know for sure, but I think that eventually, ownership is going to be passed over just for... Or they're going to attempt to pass the ownership over to the fellow that's running the place now.
So then what would happen is he would have a new landlord. Am I correct? The applicant and yourself?
Possibly, yes.
Okay.
But that's all going to be taken into account, spoken to, and that's going to be a condition of the sale.
Okay. Now, currently at that business, is there a truck involved?
They have...
I assume they have to carry the gates someplace.
Yeah, they have a truck that comes in and picks up the equipment and brings it to the site, and then they assemble the gates on the site.
And they park the truck there?
Yeah, they have a place to park the truck. The funniest part is...
Okay. And do you know how many employees are in the front business?
No, I don't. I've been there, and I can at least say that I've seen fellow Andy and another guy. And then when Pedro, Geron, comes up, because he's in Florida right now, he's there too.
Do you wish to continue?
I do, Mr. Chairman, with your permission. Thank you. Mr. Caruso, what the board members have in front of them is an as-built layout of the property, and they're looking at an empty rectangle, that forty-one hundred square feet. So now it's up to you to fill in the blanks and tell the board what you anticipate to go in that forty-one hundred square feet. So let's take a break. You heard in my opening remarks that you were hoping to handle three, maybe four, customers at a time. Is that correct?
That's our discussion.
So that part of that forty-one hundred square feet would be, there would be four vehicles in there. Is that correct?
Yeah, four vehicles, four customers, yes.
Yes, for four customers. And that you also heard in the opening statement that rather than having a traditional lift, that your client wants to use air jacks.
Air jacks, portable lift setup.
And you heard me use the NASCAR example.
Yes.
Right? Is that...
Very good example.
Is that a good example?
Very good example. I don't know if these guys can move as quick, but that's up to me.
But that's up to you, James.
Yeah.
I don't want to ask if I may, I know what I'm trying to... You mentioned in your opening, at least I thought I heard, three. So it could be four vehicles on the site at any one time.
Yes, what I said, Counselor, tried to say anyhow, is that we know we can handle three very quickly.
Right.
And we're not quite sure about that fourth one. And I suppose that would be up to Mr. Caruso to see how efficient that operation is going to be. You also heard in the opening remark, and it sounds like I'm getting bored, you also heard, you also heard, but it's important to put this on the record now, that this concept is not to have tires stacked around in this area.
That's exactly the reason for this.
He's going to keep his inventory down and then use the computer system to bring a tire in if somebody wants to buy that new tire. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I also talked to you about how you are having that tire brought in. And you stated that you would absolutely agree to a stipulation that there would be no tractor-trailers at all involved in this operation.
Well, there is none. There are paddle trucks that will...
And you would stipulate to that?
Well, that's what I've seen.
Because once you go on the roll and say that, then the board is going to rely on that representation, and that's going to end up in the resolution.
Mr. Alvarado is another place in North Arlington, and I've seen the operation.
And it's a paddle truck?
Yes.
And if you're going to deliver one or two tries, that's all you need?
Yes.
Similar operation without a lift?
I don't know if it has a lift. I didn't go inside, but I was out there, talking to him in his office. I didn't go inside and look at the whole situation.
So technically, there's not going to be any truck tires being changed, only cars?
No, no truck tires. If they did truck tire, they would do the truck tire over there.
In North Arlington?
In North Arlington, yes.
Okay.
It's more cumbersome to get in because there's a driveway here. Although it's ample, it still may not be big enough for certain things.
Possibly we would do light trucks?
Yeah.
Pickups and stuff?
I think they do some of that over there.
Pickup, I can say. Let me ask you one. So there's going to be no auto repair or auto bodywork done there?
No auto bodywork whatsoever.
Okay. And no auto repair?
Auto repair, no. There may be some kind of alignment in the future. I don't know. I don't think they have that in mind right now, but in the future, they may do some front-end aligning. Tow, tow out.
The oil changes, the batteries?
None of that. These are tire men. They don't even know how to do it.
And, Mr. Chairman, when we make the representation, we would ask the board, if the board passes this, to make that as a condition also.
Yes.
So that there's no wiggle room. We want the board to know. This is a straight application.
No problem.
There is an exception to the general rule that I gave about inventory on new tires. There will be a limited inventory on used tires, retread tires. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you were telling me that that limited inventory would be on more popular models.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I mean, the specialized type of tires. But they have them stocked in North Arlington, and they can get them right away, you know, just by my call.
Is there anything that I did not ask or did not cover in my opening statement that you would like to address with the board now?
I think you covered everything.
How would the used tires that come off the cars be disposed of?
They're picked up and recycled.
Okay.
Put it out and recycle.
And I assume if you're going to have tires there, like you said, they're not going to be stacked up. I assume you're going to put them on a rack?
Yeah, there's places for a rack. But for the most part, we're trying to keep away from that as much as possible. There are room, there is room outside on the top, outside of the building. That's been spoken about. And that might be the... They want to keep away from it. We'll see what happens.
All right. And the front business would continue as far as we've done that?
Yes.
Okay. Now, on this map that we have here, so this map is a little bit bigger, can you explain to us, or do you want your engineer planner to explain to us how the workflow would go? In other words, how the cars would come in, where they would go in from and go out? Because the front of the building has the Town Gate company.
Yes, but there's no entrance to that side anyway. It would be through the back.
You would go in through the back from which side? From Mill or from Washington?
Well, you can get in from, there's a dock in the front, right on Mill Street. And that's where the Town Gate people load their truck.
Okay.
This was going to be up that driveway. There's a long trestle all the way up. And then there's some room to pull right in to the other side. So there's some storage buildings in the back that have nothing to do with this. And in between the two, there's plenty of spots for other cars. So traffic can be moved around quite easily.
All right. You're talking about the asphalt driveway to the left in the building?
Yes, as it goes up, and then it curves for, and it's short. I don't know if it's depicted there.
Well, on this, it's better.
Yeah.
On the other one, it doesn't show it at all unless this is the end of it, maybe?
Yeah, it just goes to there, then you go to the right.
Do you anticipate vehicles coming? I just want to make sure this is clear. Vehicles are coming to the property from Mill Street, or they will...
No, they have to come from Mill Street.
Okay.
That's the only way to do it.
Okay. Just want to make sure of that. Just an operational issue. Do you have like beat braking machines and beat mounting machines for tires and things like that in the confines of the building?
Yeah, they probably leave them. Yes.
And you have a rail balancing machine too?
Yeah, a rail balancing machine to break the tire down.
Yes.
Take it apart.
And while the board is looking at the schematics, Mr. Caruso, we did not talk about any signage. Is it fair to say that you would abide by the sign ordinance and location and size and coloring and lettering?
Of course.
So that there would not be any need for a variance? You would certainly comply? And if the board approved this, you would work with Mr. Di Lorenzo on the reputation?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. That's the end of the testimony. I have some...
It is, Mr. Chairman.
Any members of the board have questions? Yes.
Sorry, a few questions. The driveway, on my survey, it looks like it's outside the property. Or am I looking at this incorrectly?
Well, that's been there for a long period of time. With the concern, the grocery street has the same situation. And that's just the way it is, is outside the property line. It's on the railroad property line. About three quarters on his and a small amount on the others. And it's been going on for years in this space.
I don't even know who it belongs to.
Once the railroad...
The railroad. The tires that you're going to get rid of, not the recycled, I mean the re-treads, will they at any time be stored outside?
No, that's going to be done right away now.
And we were talking about no...
Maybe for a few hours, yes.
No, I meant any other time. You were saying no on-site parking. Where would anybody park?
Well, you have Mill Street, you have...
No, 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 on the site.
Oh, I said no, there'd be no on-site parking for the employees. There'd be parking for the customers. It would be enough to have three or four cars. And I think, I think...
Yeah, I meant, is there any parking outside? Or did you just mean inside?
Inside. Go right inside. I think the employees park the outside.
Well, Mr. Mafucci, when you did your site inspection, as the chairman pointed out, to the left of the building, there is that macadam.
Right.
Which is pretty easy to drop your...
Right, but I'd go to the back to get it away.
Yes, and it really goes nowhere. That's why you were wise. But we would stipulate, you know, that our customers, all of that is inside. No work is done outside. And that there is no on-site parking for any of the clients.
Okay, who throws it?
I think it's seventeen feet wide at the narrow in the front. I can read this very good. I have very good eyes for this magnified place.
On the left of the building, you have two gates there. One going in the building, and one going along the railroad track. Is going to utilize both areas that way?
The other area is going to be utilized, has been, is being utilized by people.
The one railroad track.
There's two of them. There's one on the one side. If you go inside, you find part of the Town Gate concern. Nothing to do with this. This other area is up the driveway next to the right, and that's where it starts.
You'll be sharing the same toilets? I only see one toilet there, that's why I'm asking a question. Actually, the toilet's in your area, not in there.
Yeah, no, they made some kind of provision where both of them can have access to the toilet. They'll be saving the same, but they're going to have to enter their own entrances.
But they're going to be separated?
Yes.
In other words, no one can get into where the other one is?
Well, the other one's, when somebody's in there, it's going to lock.
No, I'm not even talking about the toilet. I'm talking about the business itself. There's going to be a wall there that's solid. Nobody can go into one versus the other.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one, maybe, to be Mr. Geron. Look at the survey there. It goes to the opposite side of the river, the property?
Yeah, the river's included in his property. And he fancies himself as a fisherman, and sometimes he presents some eels and barbecue and so on.
No, I'm just surprised.
Yeah, that's why he uses the B.
It's a very old case, obviously.
Yes. Any other questions, or... Yes?
I have one question. I'm looking at the two maps, the actual site survey and the floor plan. In the southeast corner of the floor plan, it looks like there's an area that's being closed. I'm talking about the steel jock.
Yeah, that's a storage area that they have for the steel. Yeah, that's a storage area that they have for the steel that they're using. That's where we're going to, above that, is what I was talking about before when I said there might be some racks to store some tires. But in there, there's, and that's being taken out little by little because they've wound down on their business. That's why they have this other space to rent now. Because their business went a lot slower than it was before.
Any other questions by members of the board?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So the only way in to this site would be to drive in? There's no entrance from the back, correct? No doorway?
With doorways on the other side, you could walk through the other location. There's an office and so on and so forth. And you walk in, there's other access. And then there's another one way up. There's a Portuguese fellow that owns a mechanic shop. Right next to there is another driveway. If you go in, you can have access.
Would you care to say, just to ask you, only because you see a lot of these, you see these separate areas in municipalities, in essence, what this is, is like a satellite of the distributor that is in North Arlington, correct?
I don't know if you would call it that, but it's gonna be somewhat like that. Somewhat like that. That's gonna be like the principal office and that's gonna be like the secondary office for now.
Like the inventory and...
Yeah, they're probably gonna use the same stuff.
Tools, yeah, you know, if you, okay, I...
Counselor, I like that characterization. I like that. As a matter of fact, I was thinking about doing that, but because they're two separate operations.
Right.
I didn't go there, but now that you bring that up, I think that is a very good way to understand it.
I mean, you still have to make a proof standard, but I wanna try to clarify for the board's purpose, because you're not running STS.
No. The heavy operation is gonna be across the river, and this is the light operation to see if in fact it catches on. And if it does catch on, then they will try to establish other locations with this new concept. But that, the mothership, as you said, would be across the river. I like that.
Thank you for that clarification. Now, on these plans that were given, the ones that were marked A2, that page, there's two areas that are accessed from the part of the building you're gonna use. But it says not in scope of work or parts. One is to the right, one is to the back.
Yeah, that's, like I said, that's stuff that they have stored in there. Steel and other materials that they make are all outdoors with.
But the only way to get in, to get in there is through the property, the part of the property you're gonna use?
There's another way of getting in there also. There's another entrance way through the building.
Because according to these plans, there isn't a, there's, it looks like a door to the one on the right. It looks like a, an overhead, probably a gate to the back piece. So those are storied areas?
Yeah, these out here are storied, not in the scope of work. But there can have access be made from here. Access can be made from here into here from these people.
Or outside?
Yeah, from outside. There's an outside, there's an outside area, like a patio area.
I understand that, but there's no door to go out that way from what I can see on this map or this...
There was a door.
...scannad.
Well, there's another way right in here to go out through here and then walk around. That also could be done.
Yes, that...
And they'd have to infringe any other people's area, you know?
Yeah, but they would have to access it through the two doors on the back. The one on the right, I don't see any other access except from where you guys are.
Well, no, not for anything big. There's also, well, it's not even written on there, but there was just like a side rail along the river that is concrete in a very, very crude way. With hand, with a, with a handrail that you could fall onto and walk around, but that's not...
I guess the back is free.
That is an ancient area of the town.
Yes.
That's what, that's why I asked the question. Okay.
See, this is all one, this is all one company at one time.
Yes, I know that.
Now, this guy's coming in because this fellow's changing his mode of doing business, Mr. Aaron. So this is, you know, so now, if anything has to be done...
He came before us, you know. I don't know if you're aware of that.
What?
He came before us for approval.
Way back when?
Way back when. Well, maybe ten years ago.
I thought he was my grandfather and you told me.
He came before. I remember when the application came from Flores. Now, that was the property on the corner.
Town Gate, remember that? Gone more than a while.
You don't remember the Town Gate?
It could have been there.
That's the only Town Gate.
This is the one building down from the corner property, isn't it?
Yeah.
Two.
Yeah.
Two.
Two. The one's on the corner and there's another one, a small one.
There's a repair shop on the right. There's a store on the corner and the repair shop and then the Town Gate.
Yeah, the first one is, might be on Washington Avenue.
I think there was another question I saw.
Is there a Town Gate planned to move out of Balvo or not?
I don't know yet. We don't know what we're gonna do yet. Pedro is dealing with Andy, and if Andy does well, it might be one way. If they have all the equipment they need here and they have all the facilities, so they may, we don't know. If they do that, well, Pedro's moving out. Pedro's gone. Pedro's gonna leave. He's getting older. He wants to relax and fly. And he has Andy, a young man about twenty-eight years old, that's running the show right now. He comes up periodically. In fact, he was here for a little while, just left.
And you know, this has nothing to do with land use.
Yeah.
But we all know that it's gonna come down to the negotiating rules, whether they stay or not.
These guys are always talking amongst themselves, between themselves.
Well, there is a question I'd like to ask Mr. DiLorenzo, if you could spread him in. Mr. DiLorenzo, square. Mr. DiLorenzo, when I was, you saw this word, the testimony you're about to give in this matter, will be the truth self-helpy guide. Just like the, you state your names, probably your last name. Frank Lorenzo, D E L O R E N, very much so. Frank, in the event that Town Gate moves out, would any new person come in, coming in, have to come before the board?
Well, if this was approved tonight, then no, as long as the use was good, because it's to be permitted, as long as it's permitted. So we're allowing two principal uses on the same lot. So if another guy came in and the use was good, I believe we'd have to go back and redo it.
Okay. Now, in the event they move out and these gentlemen look to expand it to the whole building and it becomes one principal use?
No.
Does that change anything?
No, it'd be a lesser use, you know, less, you know, so be the only one. I don't think it'd have to come back.
Second use, I think it would be considered abandoned, uh...
That's my point.
Mr. DiLorenzo?
Well, abandoned in what definition? Because that's, you know, if the abandoned in which way?
Well, if the tire...
He's trying to sell it, and you know, he's not there, you know what I mean?
Oh, no, and you're right. There's no objective standard for it. I'm saying that if the, if the tire facility took the whole building over. Right. I, would it be fair to say, it would seem to me at least, that would be an indication that the...
Oh, that the other guy, yeah.
It is a second use.
Exactly. He was still there, he owned half, he was in half, and then a few months later, John Doe came and wanted the same thing, then it, then we'd be fine if he was, you know, a little...
Right, yeah. But if he took over the whole place?
Yeah, then it's no problem.
Then the second use would be abandoned.
Well, yeah, he wouldn't, no room for him to go there anyway.
Right.
The only thing it may kick off, if it's over two thousand feet, we ran into this with...
Well, if it's an altar raising, if he was doing anything.
Maybe site plan.
But, you know, it's probably not gonna...
Okay.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
If this is approved and if the tire business should not be successful, would what, put it back to the use board, that second use?
Would it be able to go back to the same use?
Well, that's Mr. DiLorenzo's question.
That's a shame. Yes, Frankie?
Yeah, well, if the use were approved in the second use there, so principal use is on the lot. Now, this use is allowed.
If it's permitted use, fine, is that what you're saying?
Right, yes.
Okay. Anyway, if any other use, if they, if the tire store, tire facility failed.
Right.
And they wanna commit to another use, they'd have to come back to the board, you know?
Well, even if it was a permitted use? Because that's why, if this is a permitted use, the only way it's there because two principal uses are on the same lot.
Right.
No, no, you're correct. That's correct.
Once you get that second use, then it's gonna work with the land you're selling.
Exactly.
Yeah, right?
Now, if you're only run two uses, you'll run...
It's good to have these policies.
Unless it's banned.
Unless it's banned.
Okay, that's why I wanted to put it to the board.
All right, any other questions by members of the board of the witnesses? Any questions by members of the public of the witnesses? There is no public. I have to ask a question anyway. All right, you may call your next, well, he's the reporter. If he wants to ask a question, he can ask it to him. Otherwise, you could call your next witness.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, Paul Baumann? He's yelling at me for taking his, a piece of paper. He calls it his property, Mr. Chairman.
Do you saw this word, the testimony you're about to give in this matter, will be the truth self-helpy guide?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last name for the record.
Name is Paul Baumann. Last name is spelled B A U M A N.
Very well, Counselor?
Thank you.
And Mr. Baumann is recognized as an expert as long as you still have your licenses.
I do.
So for engineering and planning, correct?
But mostly planning.
And this is just as an aside. Council members, when we were doing the Belton Land Inc. Horizon installations in the last stage, and Dolan, and Dolan represented half the municipalities. So we're talking about ninety-five to two thousand five. All right, Mr. Baumann, you have been retained as the planner in this project. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
And you have done site inspections by yourself and also one with me and with Mr. Caruso. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
And you have prepared a report to justify these variants. Is that correct?
Well, I prepared testimony.
Yeah, testimony, yes.
I don't have a written report.
No, you have notes. Before we do that, let's just go over the, let's take out the plans and go over the dimensions. Mr. Caruso and I were talking about approximate dimensions. Can you put specific dimensions on the record, please?
Yes, we're talking about the area that this tenant is going to occupy exclusive of all those words that say not in scope of work or talk about existing tenant one. The main portion that was being leased to our client is measuring forty-four feet by ninety-three feet, three inches. Total of forty-one hundred and three square feet approximately. So for sacred argument, total of forty-one hundred square feet. One law. Is there any other question about that? But that's, that's the leased area and that's going to be basically where the operations will take place for this use. Although there will be the informal use for parking temporarily, the area behind that use, where it's macadam for purposes of parking any third or fourth vehicles while the others are being worked on inside the area, and there will be an adequate turnaround for a K-turn to come out of the site after the work has been performed on the vehicle.
What you're saying is, the vehicles will enter to the east side in the back, all the way to the back of the screen back part?
Yes.
Okay, right where that entrance is, where it actually has a line saying ninety-nine feet, or sorry, ninety-three feet, ninety-three feet, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
It's not easy to source, point, right?
Well...
But what I'm saying is, how many cars could actually fit in the building to be worked on at one time?
Physically, I think there could be more than three or four, but because there are going to be work areas and areas for people to move those jacks around. The client is looking to operate on a steady state, maximum of three, possibly four parts.
Okay. All right, now, the, so the, so the, all right, then they would be able to fit good then. No problem. They'd be able to turn around. Could each car go out individually? If one gets done before the other, I think is an up space, isn't it?
The, the problem would be if there are two cars that are being worked on side by side, because one of them would have to creep up into the bays that are going towards the west side of the building while the other one would come out.
What's, what's this on, on the bottom? Are these bays? Where is, these little boxes?
No, those are columns of...
Oh, those are columns?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought maybe they would be pulled in over there.
No.
That you would be able to at least fit three comfortably, no problem. Then they could back out and pull out.
They could possibly work some arrangements, but I think for the design purposes that they want to present to the board.
Mr. Caruso should be up so he can see what we're talking about. If you pulled the cars up there, it looks like you would have three spaces that they could fit comfortably, and then if one gets done before the other, they could back out and go right out the driveway.
So it could be constructed that way.
Well, that would be, that would work well.
But our site inspection showed the cars coming into the area and facing the longitudinal direction of these area rather than pulling into right turn.
Yes.
But we're flexible enough to move that around. This should work better. Right, and that's, that's, as we say, if the board approves it, it would be something...
No, I'm just suggesting so.
I would seek to make that all the hours that we put in is that the chairman's suggestion is better than ours. And then we can adopt that as a condition if the board approves it. Yes, Mr. Caruso?
Absolutely, great. Absolutely, great, I think.
How, 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 how deep is this?
Forty-four feet.
Forty-four feet? So that would be enough to back out and out. Time out.
Hold on.
Okay.
Yes? If there are, if that's clear, Mr. Chairman, that we get into the planning testimony then?
Sure.
Mr. Baumann?
Unless anybody has questions about anything else involving them.
Okay.
Anybody else? No?
Okay.
No plan?
Mr. Baumann, would you go through the planning justification? And I know that you paced your, your research on Mr. DiLorenzo's letter. And Mr. Chairman, would you mind if we did that in narrative form to move to the law?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, basically, the board has to consider, we have to show that we satisfy both positive criteria under NJSA fifty-five D, forty fifty-five D dash two et cetera. And I would offer that as the positive criteria, and we also have to satisfy the negative criteria. So let me approach the positive criteria. Section fifty-five D dash two A specifically says that something that promotes the general welfare of the community is a good purpose of zoning. So this actually will eliminate vacant commercial space in the zone, in the BG zone, and therefore, I believe, supports the intent and purpose of that paragraph or section of the municipal land use law. In that same section, fifty-five D, also, section two G, provides for this type of a commercial retail space in an appropriate location. Was zoned for this type of a use as a retail use, and this therefore supports the intent of the mixed use zone that BG zone is intended to serve. The application also supports section fifty-five D dash two zero, or O, if we're going alphabetically. In that the tire shop will promote the recovery and reclamation and recycling of used tires, which in turn will support the state recycling plan goals and will also complement Bellville's recycling program. It eliminates municipal waste and therefore supports both of those two aspects of the intent of subsection two O. And concerning the negative criteria, again, there's a two-prong test that we have to satisfy, that the variants, the use variants can be granted without sub... the variance, the use variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And I would offer that the proposed use is permitted in the zone and therefore is, by its design, not going to be a detriment to the, the zone. And the proposed use will not generate any nuisance or detrimental factors to the neighborhood. So for those two parts, I believe we satisfy the first prong of the negative criteria, that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Concerning the second prong of the negative criteria, that the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the township's zone plan or zoning ordinance. Combined with the town gate as an existing entity to the building, this adds another permitted use to this building and therefore will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. The second principal use, being where it's located within the building, is not going to be a detriment to any neighbor. It's not going to be a detriment to any surrounding properties, and it's going to basically be an invisible use. So therefore, it's not a prominent second use of the building, and it will be concealed within the building completely. So for those reasons, I believe we satisfy both prongs of the negative criteria. Now, we also have a variance for parking. Now, pointing out the fact that any kind of a use is going to create a parking situation when it's not the primary use of the property. This is one of those type of uses, as previously testified by Mr. Caruso, where we're not going to be occupying the, the interior of the building or the exterior of the building by any one customer for any length of time. Nor is it going to be something that's going to be like a shopping center coming in and out, a lot of traffic in and out flow. And because of the way it's been designed to operate, using the internet for scheduling appointments, these visits will be short duration, and if there should be a situation where somebody comes in on an emergency basis, and a rare occasion that that would happen, you still have ample street parking for any overflow of cars beyond the capacity of the site. So for those reasons, looking at it from a C-two perspective, I believe the benefits outweigh the detriments of granting the variance. And the benefit to be accrued is gaining a tenant to utilize what would otherwise be vacant commercial retail space. And that in turn creates a second benefit, which is a positive economic impact on the neighborhood, and therefore, I believe, outweighs any detriment to the grant of the variance.
I would like you, you know, online, just to clarify, because the, the Counselor, you were written a letter saying C variance was needed. Could you just clarify a little more specifically exactly what the variance is for under our, just so we have a full record?
For the C?
Number of parking spaces, is it four?
Yes.
Okay, and what's permitted, what's, what's, what's required in the zone?
That has yet to be determined because of the way that the applicant filed the application. We did not get a final determination from Mr. DiLorenzo, but approximating, I think we would need by a hundred and fifty square foot per space. Two hundred? Okay, if it's two hundred, then we would need approximately twenty-one spaces. We can adequately, without stretching our imagination, accommodate at least six, maybe more, depending on where the cars are located within and outside of the building. Since they aren't striped spaces, it's hard to say it's this or it's that. But there is sufficient area within the building and outside of the building to at least accommodate six or seven at any one time simultaneously.
Mr. Baumann, in order to lay additional facts for your opinion, regardless of what the ordinance says by way of how many spaces based on square footage, our client has designed his operation where the need for parking is three to four spaces. Isn't that correct, sir?
At any one time, yes. The way the plan to operate the facility would be by the appointment, and that would dictate how many cars would be there at any point in time.
So that operationally, we have taken what the ordinance is and made it work for us, and that's why you're asking for it.
That's right. We believe there will not be any negative impact or detrimental impact on the zone plan or the zoning ordinance if the variance were granted.
Um, I'm gonna interrupt. Mr. DiLorenzo?
Yes.
I have a question. I am looking through the copy of the zoning ordinance that you gave me about a month or two ago. And I can't find a BG zone.
On page fifty-one.
Fifty-one. Oh, I got short fifty-one.
Twenty-three, seven point eighteen, fifty-seven, fifty-one.
Okay, permitted in a BG commercial residential mixed-use district. Okay, thank you.